Why is Bob always eating? Tell me why Bob is always eating. Look at him, look at him. Why are you eating, Bob? Why are you always eating? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Go back there, Bob.
This is up.
Long way to go, I'll show you. This is five hundred pages of every kind of blog you would write in every day. Just look it up, California Dev Club.
California debt financing guy.
I'll show you.
The round act does not require you, the members of the audience, to listen to public comment, although of course you are more than allowed. The only other thing I will say is that for anybody who is going to try to offend not only his body but also to the members of the public, that is what their goal is.
I'm gonna say, "Thank you, Prime Minister Pumpkinhead, for the prior restraint." Thank you, Prime Minister.
The individuals are not necessarily to use with this body. Certainly not to have a public view of it.
He looks like he never grew past the age of twelve.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure.
It's right after these. Yeah. One of those lines, Bob. I wanna, I wanna let them go. And then I wanna...
I didn't hear any names. He actually said he's on my side, like he agrees with us, you know? He agrees with us about Scientology.
You can take, you can take one of those. You can take one of those names.
Which one was it?
It was the third one, I don't know, just say what it's called. I know, I know what it's called. Yeah.
Good morning, which item would you like to speak to?
Good morning, I'd like to speak to item thirty-three.
Okay, Mr. President, go ahead.
Good morning, my name is Karen Paxton, I'm here representing the Hollywood chain from Commerce and our over six hundred fifty organizations that we represent, located in one of America's greatest tourist hubs, to express our strong support for bringing tourists to the kiosks to L.A. Hollywood welcomes visitors every year, and especially to the citizens coming, we need strong initiatives that will allow visitors and residents to move to the city and take advantage of the navigation system, event calendars, local business directories, required by other events that the kiosk will offer, benefits that are customized to the council district, and in our region, tourist leadership system, supporting local businesses. This program is projected to generate hundreds of millions of dollars for the city through the life of the contract. On top of that, the city will not have to pay the dime, and will then for maintaining this program. We ask for the support of the council for tourist kiosks, and may we do your consideration. I'd like to call a few more names. Jeanette, Francis, and Diane Z.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
Um, I would like to do one, two, and two more, but I get the numbers.
Okay, so just as a reminder, that's fine. I was ever holding for public comment on the agenda, I'm one and two, and I was twenty-nine, two thirty-three.
Yes, definitely, the other ones are in that group, but next, yeah.
Two minutes, okay, items, one minute per general, go ahead.
That only says two minutes. Thank you. Um, okay, so for the first two, well, I'll just speak on one and two, with these always giving away public easements and public areas, how would you guys inhabit to not do that? Because it's our property, but land, you can't keep getting land, land is, you know, so why get rid of any land? You know, um, because then I'm worried that when Scientology, if they ever try to do their street vacation, that they're gonna come here, and they're just constantly, "Yeah, yours, yours, yours," passing it out, that they're gonna say, "Well, you need to give us ours." And no, because then what that does, they will just block it, block it, and, you know, nobody will be able to try to continue to reach the people on the inside who are desperate to get out of that hole, but they feel they can't. So, um, no street vacations, no, um, anything, just stop doing that, it's not necessary, so I'm gonna ask you to please stop doing that. Um, and then, uh, the one about the fire, yeah, if there's still an emergency, I mean, you know, I don't trust, you know, like, okay, then, you know, of course, we gotta continue, I guess, but the only thing is, is that Bob is on that, and I have a little bit of a sense with Bob right now, because, um, A, he's probably not even listening, which is usual, but anyone who I know consistently listens to, is Mr. Hernandez listens all the time, except right now, I called her finally, and, um, and, and City Attorney always listens, but Bob, what he does, I thought it was, I'm gonna vote, yeah, for any of his things right now, is that he puts public comment at the end of his meetings that he chairs, you know, and I feel like prior restraint to me, and I don't appreciate it, and I don't appreciate that it makes me have to go home on the, on the subway at, like, you know, at the rush hour, which makes it harder for me, you know, to try to avoid, I don't wanna roll on people, and I want a good spot, you know, a good spot, so I actually don't think anything that Bob is doing right now, and if Bob is getting that together, and listen, then I may change my mind, though, man. Um, the other one I'm gonna talk to is about the kiosks, okay? Again, you're adding more things and more structures that will, in people's ways, especially people that click in chairs, or people, you know, it's just more things to triple, more things to pump into, more things to tie, more things to, you know, and I understand information and stuff, but why not have it as an app or some other way? Why keep making our space smaller and smaller and smaller? And, you know, and, and, um, and, you know, and I'm, I'm saddened that finally that Mr. Hernandez finally got first time in conference room, finally got her, and, but I'm not happy, she wrote an apology now, because she knows how it makes me feel. I want her to listen, I want her to listen, but I pretty much given hope with a lot of it, but not Mr. McCosker, he's still, I think he's still my favorite, Mr. McCosker.
General, what do you have?
First of all, I want to say shout out to Smokin' Stan, I appreciate having my Smokin' Stan family with me as the, you know, sixth year before y'all, because they help me, because then I can go on replay later, and really get a good look at what all your scenarios are, because he had that good view, and so, um, I appreciate Smokin' Stan for that. And Mr. Nizarian, you've got a good feather here, because you're my guy, so he's not even listening, he's my ref, what if I'm sitting here telling it, Mr. Nizarian? I might be talking about stuff in our area, now, yeah, there's a, a tree that needs to be cut that they will not cut, okay, he's not listening. So anyway, we had a beautiful protest, okay, at, uh, Elhan Hubbard Way, you know, and I am grateful that it was filled with love, peace, and we worked really hard to talk to the people inside that building, to let them know that we are their lifeline should they wanna get out, because we know many of them do. Um, many of them, they get in trouble for even attempting, they can't just walk out of that building, I don't know if you are aware of that, and we'd like a, I want to check, but Phil Anderson, please, thank you.
Next speaker.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to? Uh, my name is Jeanette, and I'm strongly against this U.S.R. fee. Can you really call her less her proposals?
That's a non-agenda, she can't comment on that, that's three. Three isn't available for public notice. You can't do that. No. She didn't take public notice, she said, "I want just three." What she's doing is not right. They should've switched it to just say public comment, but they didn't. She did this last time, too, with the special item, she was talking about the cannabis. Yeah, yeah. After this, I'm going up. She can't do this, oh my God, it's so annoying. Item three is not available for public hearing.
We already have some protections for the public right away, that provides real public benefits and a lot of money for the state, so I...
I, I agree. I know. I know, I agree.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to? Senator Shigeru, Harold McCallum, and Wendy R. Good morning, which item would you like to speak to?
Sancho, Sancho, Sancho Huerda.
A part of...
Hard, I don't know. Maybe it's like ten, fifteen, I was outside. Many communist meetings. The first, the first time? You know, she didn't make her address, and she probably called on that case.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, man, doing good, gonna be there Friday eight thirty AM.
You want me to go sit down, please?
I didn't let him sit down.
Yeah, but it's accommodations, sit down. So, so do I have to write a, a, a security accordance to get to sit up there? You let Otis sit, I don't, why can't I?
What?
She's sitting down. That's sitting down, she can do that.
Yeah, she can.
She has every right. But I'm, but I'm asking for an accommodation, she'll sit in fucking high school, wanna sit down? What? No, I'm in a stand-up.
Dude, I'm trying to hear this, but he keeps talking to me.
To remind this committee, if LA and LA can, for letting one's campaign for House Justice is a council duty to all of its citizens, our two simple preliminary demands today, tomorrow, week after week, without waiver of till with our vet, they are a fall, first legally mandated mail service. Here's Jordan, means we on site. Second, we demand restoration of twenty-four seven security, not armed thugs, not intimidation, but real tenant conductive presence across seventeen...
We can use our phones up here.
Please help us find this debate, find the soul of this country. The body of, the research of children all day, we need your help, inspire not to delay interest, so first, just be here, we have to move on to the next speaker.
And before we make this one up, if I can think of a time to provide a record, if you had additional comments you would like to say?
If you wanna go next, she did, it's okay, okay, that's fine.
You can always provide a public comment online at laampl.com, that URL is available at the top of the, of every council agenda, you can also do a Google search. Um, as you can tell by the gentleman who is standing podium, uh, this is more of the time where I'm trying everybody that offending you and offending everyone around the horseshoe is likely one of the goals here, the only way in which they win is if you let them and are under the time, which forces us towards rules. So, I would ask that everybody, for your continued patience, um, and with that, Mr. Herman, three minutes for the items, and one minute per general, go ahead.
Muchas gracias por la importación, Pichinco Negro, abogado. Usted ya sabe que los ojos tienen nada, con Pichinco immigration.
Wait, thank you very much, uh, if you are talking naturally, you know that we don't plan anything that we ladies are talking, we're ready to meet you.
Y este Pichinco, cabeza de prego.
You're a softy man, and what is your, uh, head?
This is something I don't need to check, this is your first of all, please, if you have a public comment.
Public budget finance to me, everyone. For the record, the program grants that this institution illegally abuses brands and bonds and their interpretation as criminal enterprise, Rico, to rip off the public. The physical impact they mistake that reports...
Which item are you speaking?
I just started telling you, boo.
What is the number of the item?
But why you putting the motherfucking clock on item twenty-two, you stupid bitch?
Great, well, guess what, item twenty-two is now a public comment, which is your last and final order, typically items that are a public comment are one of the weirdest...
No, three acts, well, how about that one?
You were allowing it to be two thirty-three, go ahead.
That fucking white nigger up here talking about public railways and the maintenance of these kiosks is unexampleable fault. The installation of God...
You gonna be there Friday? Eight thirty arraignment of current price raised felonies?
We have consideration...
Department thirty-two.
...of the motherfuckers walking in, and then goddamn Diane...
You sure? I know you really want it.
And rallies are, eh, the installations for residents...
Don't worry, I'll report on it and get back to you.
...your demands, we defaulting make demands, we order you what to do, boo. In my other minutes regarding the commission of Forte Harpers, fuck Forte Harpers, on item thirty-one, item thirty-two, what numbers up on item number thirty? Exemption, Forte Airport Commissioner, fuck the feds and all that to bring into this country, light it, and your stupid ass attorney, that's number thirty, dig it? See, there's just so much information, everyone, so much to talk about here, on item of housing, item of budget, item of the airports...
Okay, so this is now on the agenda specifically, it's on the general public comment, move the general public, we have one minute, go ahead.
Sabbath, bloody Sabbath, what do you hear? Smokin' Stan is listening, and the public wants to hear. George Washington, demands some help here. Where is the fucking mayor who can bring his help here? Yeah! As old blacks Sabbath, and this world is black, this world is a Sabbath, taking away our rights to communicate about immigration? If you wanna be here in my country, the seminal country, we are the first motherfucking mutants to keep you fucking Americans out of our Forte Gate lands. Remember that, fuck you, bro, fuck you assholes, fuck!
Next speaker, and, and number three items, really do appreciate, we really appreciate, and, uh, we should not be hearing from Mr. Herman again, lest the interrupt this meeting be subject to a warning and eventual rule. Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
Uh, all items and general public comment.
There's three minutes for the items, and one minute per general, go ahead.
Uh, thank you dictator city attorney for the prior restraint, so we're gonna go straight into items one and two, and I wanna explain to you why you should vote as not only just no, but a zero vote of confidence. Tell me why the city engineer, right, the city engineer doesn't even live here, has a UPS address here, lives over a couple of states, and still gets California money, right, doesn't contribute at all to the area that they live in, gets to actually have an input in these motions, yet doesn't actually provide any money back to the area that they're supposed to live in, just like many other LAPD cops, high-ranking officers, just like Officer Rand over at the Hollywood Station, right? You got a UPS address, that's how you do it, I know your Airbnbs, I know where you guys are, and you're not really here, and why is it that other states have, uh, laws mandating that you're supposed to live in the same city that, you know, you work in as a city official? So we'll move on, right, uh, to addressing the easement part of that issue. Why is it that the city engineer continues to not write declarations supporting the prosecution of criminal entities like Scientology when they violate the public roadway by blocking with the illegal barricades that they don't get a permit for, that the city acknowledges was illegal, but yet they don't prosecute me in any sort of fashion? I know we have some deputies here in training for the city attorney's office, maybe you guys should think about that and study up on your LEMC code. I sure should know all my fifty-six oh nine, fifty-six eleven, and fifty-six twelve codes, be great for you to know it, too. Moving on right now to the item number twenty-nine, the Palisades Fire Emergency Fund. Why is it that the only thing Mayor Bass seems to care as an emergency is if wealthy billionaires go up and smoke, and it's not even that they were there, it's just some of their rich, uh, assets that they use for tax write-offs went up and smoked, but the people who are really suffering from the frauds such as the Skid Row Board Trust Fund that's been completely fraudulently mismanaged, billions and billions and billions of dollars keep getting hemorrhaged into nonprofits that are used as laundering money machines, where all the council members here have a position in the various nonprofits, that they have a cushy nest egg after the fact, and right now, actually, one of those council members is being, uh, charged with felonies coming up this Friday, Corrin, I'll see you there, Department thirty-two, eight thirty AM, I believe, so, uh, I'll go ahead and report on that shortly thereafter. We have yet another communication from the Board of Airport Commissioners, where, why is it that you can't even talk about the little runway that you're building, that the little, uh, magic bridge, but nobody seems to get any sort of financial information on the list of expenditures that have gone on there? Moving on, yet another, uh, Board of Harbor Commissioners, why is it that all these commissioners, right, already have their, uh, leave of absence, AKA, uh, I sign up my life involuntarily to the mayor, and you can fire me at any time, you have my resignation letter the moment I take the job, but yet, you sign on as a appointed position? That's not a position, you're beholden as a slave to Mayor Bass, and whatever she tells you to do, you do it, right? I mean, that's what all these commission, uh, seats are, except for a couple like the Board of Public Works, where you actually get a six-figure salary to be up there, unlike the others, who get about a seventy-dollar stipend to be there. We're gonna talk about now, general public comment, uh, I just wanna say to my one and only best friend, uh, Heidi Soto, AKA Heidi Boo, uh, I thank you for the frivolous and selective malicious prosecution, uh, you are being, uh, investigated, there will be criminal charges that something brought upon you, uh, the city now knows that you are a Scientology simp, that you do political favors for Scientology, that you actively prosecute any activist that dares speak out against your political allies, and for that, I wanna thank you, Heidi, because you really are the easiest way to find out who is actually involved in the city with Scientology, and that's what Scientology is, right? You use it as a way to smoke out all the other criminals, all the other snitches, and we now know that you're one of them. We now know that you're one of them, just like many other snitches here, one of my favorite being Bob, I just love how he has his steak fries every day on his plate, he never misses a beat, it's always eating steak fries or falling asleep at every meeting, so for that, we thank you, Bob, we thank you for your consistency, and again, thank you, Prime Minister, City Attorney, for your prior restraint.
Support that speaker, I'd like to call a few more names.
Yeah, man, good job. Appreciate it.
Um, good afternoon.
Good job.
Is the next line called for him?
Yeah.
Which item, but if you understand, okay, I appreciate...
I just wanna hear what he's gonna say next after. You can take my brother, Ted, maybe now.
Number three, number four, I know what position he's, can I speak exactly?
Absolutely.
Yes, absolutely, the speaker is very gentle, so you have one, the way it works, and then spread everybody's heart, you'll get the items first, so you have one minute for item thirty-three, and then the clock will reset to one minute per general, so go ahead.
My name is Wendy, and I'm a member of the Coalition for Beautiful Los Angeles. Um, please refer to this item, number thirty-three, we suggest a kiosk, two public works for consideration. The RFP adopted by the city for public shelter program...
Look at that, look at his face, look at, look at him on camera. Look at my camera.
The SCAP RFP adopted by the state for current facilities for programs, for the state's approval of settlement, we could use the deliverance on its promises. The RFP for the kiosk program must be reviewed by a appropriate committee, address the issues that assure it can deliver on its promises, and analyze the costs and benefits. The big question is, the council, since SCAP can't afford kiosks, why are we even considering a separate program? Is it needed, under better financial analysis, to see if the claims that are made can be turned? I ask again, please refer to this today's public works.
General comment.
And my public comment, and I'm ready for, is I'm one of the parties of the settlement, and we ask that you support the settlement today to allow SCAP programs to be forward and evolve over time. Their transit vector program offers much-needed shelter and shade for transit riders, but additionally, transit vector of John does need to be on industry standards to lessen the impacts of digital signs by increasing the digital message refresh rate. The program offers unprecedented revenues for the city, and in response, it's committed concerns to ensure the program's consistency with the city's general plan. They've done this by reducing impacts that lead to space, parts, storage, scenic centers, biological, postal resources. By supporting the settlement today, you would close a loophole, it would open the public roadway to limited advertising. We've spent four years working, we ask today to get these reportedly done, thank you.
Next speaker. Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
Uh, comment? First off, I'd like to apologize for, uh, my name is Goodwin, I am a member of LA can, um, I would respectfully ask for District Council member, uh, if both were on to grab this, and this was happening...
There is.
I'm here on behalf of the tenants of the community...
Make sure your data is...
Our main concern right now is obviously the mail, and I know it's gonna be taken care of, but, um, security, we, we were asking for, um, the restoration of the super hour of twenty-four seven security. We've had two women that have been, within the past year, have been physically sexually assaulted, and, um, we're just asking for, for help, I mean, we, we call the cops, they cut the foot, we need, we need some more surveillance there, um, and also, I can send the mail, thank you.
There you go.
Uh, hi, I'm speaking on item thirty-three.
Oh, sweet, go ahead, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Maya Diaz, I've been a non- closet professional in downtown for over eight years, and I'm also a theater artist who's worked at the sponsor of the L E T C. Uh, I'm also a big Black Sabbath fan, and I've been singing today, uh, we're talking about the wave-finding kiosks that are happening, I think this is a big win for our city, we are always in need of funds, that just will generate funds while spending few or, or that all, and the big thing, you know, someone brought up about smartphones, why can't we have an app? The great thing about the kiosks is that I think they're accessible, and inclusive, for people who might struggle income and don't have smartphones, especially our unhoused neighbors. These kiosks will provide directories, transit, three eleven hours, and bring more funding to our small businesses, which I really care about, especially since they've been heard this week from the curd moves. So let's bring more culture to LA, I think a kiosk is a good move, thank you.
Support the next speaker, I'd like to call a few more names. Devin O'Seary and Casey Madder.
Wait, he's such a, he's such a weird, he's probably a worry bar. Go, you can take one of those, just take that here. God, he's such a, he's such a weird, he's probably a worry bar. He's probably a worry bar. Just go. He's gonna go, he's too chicken, he doesn't...
It's a closed conversation that we're not allowed to comment on, but from January, now there's something to be talked about.
They're two, they're rule followers. He's a rule follower. You're such a bad influence on him, I gotta, you gotta teach him how to break the rules.
And we're here in these streets for exercising our first movement, that's not okay. I would like to watch that. I'm clearly having a different angle on Los Angeles and democracy, ask, why does General L E T E and obviously the shared department brutalize Antimonies for defending our neighbors from the illegal government impact of one mass, while exercising our first movement to protect our people?
One person repeatedly declared Antimonies, gathered peacefully on public park streets, protesting and rioting on the Russell at ten weeks. While these chances, I thought of LA, and peaceful protests, officers charged without warning on horseback, shooting at the barber village, and just jacking us, and brutalizing us. At my feet, I found those streets terrorizing our document, using the heat of nothing, American citizens.
I knew it was bullshit. I talked to my publicity general councillor and said, "If you wanna go, shoot him." And he fucking disobeyed. You know? Then whatever. I'm like, "Yeah, dude." I don't, I don't, what can I say to that?
I'm here with Casey Madras, representing the Better Neighbor Act, citizen of Los Angeles. We want to share with you that all their movements under activity, the councilman McDonald used to work for law for Ice Park City, accompanied by his lobbying for seven years to hook kiosks on their land. We believe this rate is serious and is a serious risk to the citizens. They're also serious survivors concerned regarding collection of personal data by these kiosks. We urge the council to hold off pursuing any kiosk program until the city can investigate. And now I'm going to run a general public comment. I'm here again on behalf of citizens of Los Angeles for one of the things that the law gives you for this issue regarding this staff program. We found suit of our serious privacy concerns for the original staff contract.
How do you say something to him and you work through it? People will feel for asshole that tells the truth. And let's face it, Trump told the truth about who he is, okay? He didn't lie. He's just worse than he said, but he said when he's gonna be, he did.
Yeah, he did. I know. I agree. I agree.
Good morning, Council. General City Attorney, you're in Atlantic County Federation Labor Region. Do you all, general comments first. You all laughed past a very historic vote a couple of weeks ago, and it's disheartening for us, the $10 million, the expense of the commitment. Nonetheless, I wanted to thank you for your good work for the city of L.A. and its workers. Now, item 33. I'm here speaking in support of item 33. The motion is directing the city to release an RFP within 30 days for a chosen kiosk program. The kiosk program will generate millions of dollars of much-needed revenue for the city, at zero cost to the city and good paying jobs for individuals. Importantly, this program will complement, not compete, I say again, complement, not compete, with other revenue generating programs. Currently, 23 cities have already embraced this technology. And each of these cities has had multiple advertising programs in the public right of way, seeing revenue remain steady or increase over year over year. Coming to speak during public comment is not something I typically do, but this one was important and we urge you to release the kiosk RFP within 30 days. Thank you, Council.
Wow, he left a whole memo on the table. Who does that?
They can't figure out what to do, Kelly.
All right, does that exhaust the names on the list?
No.
I don't believe it exhausts the names on the list.
Marquisi.
We'll take four more names and we'll close public comment after that. All right. Nigeria, Barbara Roy, W.R., and today.
They left me out.
Well, yeah, they're not gonna call you. I know. And so I kept telling people, "You gotta go. Go."
See this thing happen? What does that mean? I don't give a shit. Let him do it. They're just hollering up the shit, running up the shit, running down the word connection.
We have strong agency, a taxidermy, and now the city of L.A. needs to be doing this thing. We need to support the burn bus shelter program rather than undermining the workforce. Like, some of the guys that live in Los Angeles need more assistance than people that live in Los Angeles.
That's what they're doing. You know how they do.
Good morning. Which item would you like to speak to?
I would like to speak on behalf of Westside Mayor of the Council, item number 33.
Too many rule followers.
So confirm that community impact statement was filed on behalf of the council. So for everyone in the board that's recently heard of my statement.
I know. I agree.
Many councils are allowed to adopt all kinds of things. That was just what they would like to present to the council. So the council president says you will get three minutes for your community impact statement. And then afterwards, you also said that you requested one minute for general public comment. So we'll do the three minutes first on behalf of the neighborhood council, and then we'll switch you over to general public. Go ahead.
My name is Barbara Roy, the Westside Mayor of the Council. This is people on item number 33. Our council does not have any interest in kiosk programs on the long-term, three-year line.
I've seen her here before.
These structures are not the public amenities. So council says that kiosk programs do not have kind of shelter advertising programs.
She can never get into public works. She has to talk to herself because they don't have time.
Disability is the third? Thursday or? Okay, so it'll be tomorrow. No, Dusty. Dusty's actually CIA agent. Yes, you don't know.
What, has he been at it 50 years? I find it funny. They let you guys speak. I signed up before you. Now, I'm just gonna sit here. I'm gonna let him.
He's a rule follower. That's George.
This is how, no, it's not a problem.
No, it's good to be a law follower, because you're breaking the law, but you need to be a rule breaker.
You don't know me enough. I've broken the rules more than ever. That way more than you've ever even thought about. But I know when to make the moves. Right now, this is a setup process. We have to have a place to tape them down. So this is a setup.
We have to be able to know that the claims for revenue are real. We have to be able to know what kind of impact this will have on the staff program. The staff program provides community benefits to provide shade and shelter. This program risks that commitment that the city says it meant. Tourists come to Los Angeles not to see digital apps on our sidewalks. They come to see the Hollywood sign. Not advertising signs all over the place, but they're right. We have them in our neighborhoods, and we hope the council will send this program to the communities that are put so an RFP is not written in blindness, right in residence staff, which is noted in litigation. It's a bad decision. Thank you.
Okay, so we've got clues for community impact statement. You've also requested one minute for your individualized general public comments. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. I respectfully urge.
Ethics Commission is at one.
Oh, Ethics is at one? Then we can't go to.
Can't go to what? What do you mean? What do you mean can't go to what?
I'm gonna go to Little Tokyo once, but I'll eat across the street. I haven't eaten yet, so.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's right, chat. Lunch is on audit. Lunch on audit. Lunch on.
The city hopefully has learned and from the staff program that it is important to reach out to the public or releasing RFPs in the event of coverage. That's one of the lessons of staff and of the litigation. So we hope that you will support the settlement that is being made and is being delivered to the city. Thank you.
For the next speaker, I'd like to call one last name. Tell me if I've been.
Oh, you forgot me, huh? Yeah, right here.
All right, so, George, you know the rules. Please do not disrupt.
And you know the rules too.
Good morning. Which item would you like to speak to?
I signed up as W.R. I will speak to all items in general public comments.
Okay, thank you. So like, you know, we know. So the item, I love to forget. Go ahead.
Okay, so starting off with item 29. Item 29 is related to the declaration of emergency from there regarding the wildfires. This is the emergency mayor. She could be a recovery program. A program that's designed to rebuild houses and get things, get the community back together and everything. Get the way to the wildfire after the wildfires, but instead she's slow walking everything. And it's mostly focused on making the city look fancy for the rich people showing up to the Olympics. Olympics don't have a shot for them, but that's because of other reasons. So get to a minute. But the Olympics, but it's mostly focused on rebuilding the Olympics. And it's, you know, not enough just going towards rebuilding communities in the aftermath of the wildfires. Okay, so let's move on to item. 33, which is related to.
They never listen. I don't know why people have this one. Cool. The state attorney? Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, no. Yeah, he. Well, it's because he, I think for when he was, when it's us, he listens. When it's everybody else, he doesn't listen. Today, today, today he was really good about it though. Today he was really good about it because I think, you know, from all the chats I've had with him on the side, he just wants to hear. He wants to hear it for himself, because he can't say it publicly, but he wants to hear people say it. Yeah. Well, yeah, well, they're slaves to the city attorney. That's, that's all it is. All of them are slaves to their city council member. Yeah, the only reason why he took this job is because it's stable. Otherwise, he can make 10x in industry. He's capped out at 120,000. He's not gonna get. He could, but. He's not, he's not that kind of personality. He doesn't have what it takes. He just wants his fixed salary, his government pension, and his little government car. Likely, yeah. There's no way. There's no way. I've done all the numbers. There's absolutely no way you can make it out here unless that. Even on that salary, there's no way. I've seen, I've seen him carry lunch bags before, so. No, it's not. It's just, you need to understand, you know. Absolutely. Absolutely. He's a mama's boy. He's totally a mama's boy. He's scared of confrontation. He always looks away. He can never make eye contact, just like Hugo. Hugo, still to this day, can't look me in the eyes.
You'll never be done.
All right, so I guess I'll start with item 23. This is regarding the installation and maintenance of interactive kiosks. The city likes to purchase carrot of potential revenue in things when we don't really know what the revenue is actually gonna look like. And I don't know if maybe the information these kiosks are gonna give might be something that a person could be doing. The last budget for those stunt layouts, and I know this kiosk is gonna be an ongoing expense to purchase and install and operate. And we certainly, someone brought up about lobbying and data collection. Makes this motion kind of spin. So I would encourage the city to not have this at this juncture. Also, item 22 is regarding the city engineer. And last speaker brought up that the city engineer lives in Los Angeles, apparently doesn't live in California. Because it calls in question how close he is to the city, making arrangements on. Also, a reporter brought up by the other speaker, he said, "When these, the city are paying employees and they go for the money." Now, these are where they're spending payroll, and then that person is taking that money out of the city and buying homes, renting out places to be like work free and buying and doing things outside the city. So it might prove this city to be a poor requirement of employees, especially that having paid for the vacation. Because it probably makes sense as far as them being able to effectively be their job. But also, this is where the state's going to want that money and the citizens.
Or trust fund that's been evidently fraudulently mismanaged. Billions and billions and billions of dollars keep getting powers into nonprofits that are used as laundering money machines where all the council members here have a position in the nonprofit. They have a cushy nest egg after the fact. One of those council members, I know it's time for this. It's coming up this Friday. I'll see you then. We have yet another communication from the Board of Airport Commissioners. Why isn't they can't even talk about the little runway that you're building, that little magic bridge? How do they seem to get any sort of financial information on the expenditures that are going on here? Why isn't that one of these commissions, reading all the information? You're beholden as a slave to Mayor Bass and whatever she tells you to do.
Yes.
So the city that's speaking, we're gonna start sliding up. The dual of the favor of my authority, that you actively prosecute any activist that dares speak out against your political allies. And for that, I want to thank you, Heidi, because really, the easiest way to find out who is actually in the city, in Scientology, and that's what Scientology is, is smoking out all the other criminals, all the other snitches.
He has custom shrimp emojis. Welcome to the city clown cell in Los Angeles. This is your official, real window into Los Angeles city government. There's a Chinese man singing. There you go.
Now, I assume on to, uh, item number three. Uh, no, item number thirty, thirty zero.
These guys are running around like chicken with a head for a fun thing. You ever seen so many city councilmen not paying attention to anything? I never have. Look, there's nobody at their seats. I knows that are not paying attention, the city clerk is listening, that's us.
That we are officially one year away from the general election of twenty twenty-six. Get ready, come out, get ready to support our brand new council members, slippers. Are you tired of the blind last night picking over the street? Are you tired of all of the law messengers on the street?
It's true, I agree.
It was worth being here today for this. It's okay. You're gonna have tough skin, man, to do this shit all the time, you really do. You gotta be able to take the hits.
Thank you on our smoking scare, and let's hope that everybody, you know, council members, slippers, for twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, I don't know the good thing. Uh, Tommy Popeye, I represent I B W, uh, for evidence. And I'm here to support the resolution moving forward. Thank you for, uh, councilman, uh, McGusker for bringing this forward, because, you know, creating, uh, these RFPs like this. It's very needed, very lost in, in the times that we're dealing with when it comes to unemployment and underemployment of our membership. Uh, and then our members that are currently working for, you know, the city of L A, where it comes to school service. And then, uh, traffic signal, and then the electricians that are working here in the city. We need to create those jobs now, we can't wait. I know this has, has taken a while to come forward, uh, to this point, but. Please, council, let's move this forward thirty days, RFP, come back. Let's get, let's get some boots on the ground, where we can put our, let's move, uh.
Lunch is on you.
But this time we get to go across the street.
Alright, I'm out of here. I'm cutting this off.